Welcome to the September curriculum work session. I'm gonna call meeting to order. And check in to see if we have any public comments for tonight. We do not. Okay, we have no public comments. You have no committee responses to the last of those comments. Our next item on the agenda is item three point one, which is the approval of minutes from the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five work session. Which actually, now that I said that out loud, I guess we can't really approve that yet because Jake wasn't on the committee there. Aaron is not here, which is a big year very soon. So we will do that when Aaron gets here. And item four point one is the election of a chairperson, which will also leave. So Aaron gets here for that. But make sure that we do those two items during today's meeting, because we have to put them down. So I think we shall look to item four point two. And that is going to be a discussion of our different school improvement plans. And we have a few guests that we'll be inviting down to talk about that. Lynn and Mary. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. So we're here to discuss the targeted plans that me that schools have submitted to our state department of education. And we shared those plans and some summaries. So we wanted to begin with what your questions are or we're thinking. This Tricia, I think is an excellent on the agenda.
Isn't that one? Yeah.
Yeah.
The presentation for this.
Oh, yeah. Just all the plans in the folder.
So can I, just as a new member, can I get more context around how these plans were devised? Like what the committee's role is versus who a role and yeah.
Great question. Yeah, and I want to introduce myself. I'm Lynn Klinkowski, Evaluation Officer. I work in this building to support all of our schools and work. Teachers mostly and people. And one of I've I've been supporting buildings and the development of their plan. So each building has a team, a school comprehensive education plan. That's what the SCAP stands for and SCAP plan. And team that includes teachers, administrators, caregivers who are invited to participate. And then those teams have a process that's developed by New York State that they go through to develop these plans. So there's six six processes that folks have to go through, including a data review, student interviews. And visioning work to come up with their plan. Then using all of that information to develop strategies to meet the school for or the groups of students for which they were identified. And I would add to that, that that is a two to three month process. It started in the meeting in late March or April. Work their plan to find a way by early July.
So maybe, I guess I'm just wondering, just for starters, like looking over the plans for this year and looking over the ones from last year. Like in some ways, they seem a little bit different. Maybe there were some plans last year that resembled these plans a little bit more and some that were a little bit different. And I guess maybe it would be good to review. You know, maybe like what were some of the effective strategies from past years' plans that, you know, were something that you could learn from when you were devising this year's plans and just kind of wondering what, I don't know, what worked well, because I think there are some, you know, some schools that showed a lot of improvement. So I'm curious about that.
So I think something that we have learned and are getting better at is just being really clear on the methods we're using to to evaluate the success of of measures. So where we had clearer targets, we were able to evaluate the success of those goals better. Also, since these plans are related to performance on state tests in ELA math and science, right? So this was a push from the state this year with our plans to really ensure connectedness directly to those academic goals, right? So in our previous plans, you saw goals that were somewhat more related, some of the goals were related more to school culture than academic performance. And the state is really encouraging schools to, through these plans, really focus on the academic side of things more, knowing that it's all important. But in the plans themselves, they want us to be very narrowly focused, knowing that's not everything a school is working on, right? So be more concise in our plans. We also saw success in buildings where there was clear teacher leadership over initiatives, right? Like I'm thinking around the ELA work that happened at the elementary schools in terms of implementation of unclass assessment for literacy. Where we had a a robust, I would say, professional development plan to support that implementation and leaders within, teacher leaders within the buildings that were helping their colleagues to develop capacity using kind of speaking the same language, right? So where there was more robust teacher leadership over strategies, we saw that. Some strategies kind of lost focus, I would say, because of that.
And then just because it's slightly following up on your question or what you just said. So, you know, noticing a lot that there's a little bit more focus. I think it's just district-wide in general, not just in these plans, but a little bit more focus on the assessment of math and literacy skills and checking throughout the year and definitely doing a lot of monitoring. Can you talk a little bit about? And I mean, some of this is just, I think, for the purposes of some people listening and also just to kind of have a conversation about it. But just just talk about some of the implementation of the skills building, because the assessment part seemed like very clear, like how you were going to look at it and measure things in the beginning and check in at certain periods of time and then look at the end and then you have some very like structured goals about people, like percentages of students maybe going up a number from two to three or three to four and trying to get more people you know, over the bar, so to speak. Can you just talk about some of the strategies that you that were in the plans about implementing the learning, teaching, learning strategy?
Yes, so some of those at the elementary level, focus definitely on having new ELA curriculum in grades three through five that was adopted last year, magnetic reading. And so at the elementary Enfield and BJM, we're on plans last year and they both included a focus on implementation of that curriculum as designed, right, with integrity and using the embedded assessments within that. Same with M class with a new assessment tool for us that we implemented last year. So again, using assessment universally and then the instructional tools, the instructional recommendations that have come along with that to guide the work in our small differentiated field group, that are part of all ELA blocks in the building. So that was an elementary focus at a secondary level. Their focus was on, one of the focus on building common assessments and that's ongoing work. And you'll see that continuing with the with the focus on benchmarking in ELA this year at the middle school level as a strategy. So a common assessments built by the English departments jointly between Boynton and Dewitts for analytical writing are really one of the anchors, I would say, of that work that was built during last year's plan is continuing to inform the work that's Those are just two examples.
Yeah, I have just like a bunch of questions, but I'm not sure in terms of you know, this is my first committee meeting. So in terms of committee structure, is it appropriate and normal for me to like ask more like direct and targeted questions about the specifics within the plan? Or not?
I think you can, you can ask whatever you want.
Whatever I want.
It's your committee. Think strategically about the time that we have and the things that we
Yeah, yeah, we have. We have so much time and probably everybody has some more questions, but yeah.
So I it sounds like at the elementary school, there's been a focus on like curriculum and fidelity, which resonates with me based on what I know about curriculum design and work. When you describe like the middle school strategy of like building common assessments, I guess I'm confused by that because I would imagine that the first step would be to identify curriculum and then use the curriculum embedded assessments, given that those exist. So I guess I'm just trying to understand the discrepancy between used strategies and where are we with addressing like curriculum use at the middle school.
So at the middle school level, it is they are using standards and writing their own curriculum. So having a common assessment to evaluate how that instruction went the curriculum that teachers have written is where they are at and focusing right now. And having a shared understanding across both of the schools is a goal. And the collaboration between those teams, because staff can be shared, students can be shared and having a thoughtful approach has been a focus as far as collaboration.
And so then implementing, so you're doing those assessments and then is there like a time throughout the year? You might have already said this, and I apologize, with in the middle schools where there's like assessing kind of what is that actually telling us about how well this locally developed curriculum is actually working and what, how might we want to make adjustments even throughout the a single year?
Before. Yes, it helps identify. So one tool and looking at the results, so Lynn shares out the itemized results of the state tests with golden leaders. This year they came out quite earlier than typically early August. So that those things can look at that with their department leaders and teams and make goals for professional development and instructional support throughout the year. And you'll see some, while that isn't mentioned in the plan, that's how this tool is used beyond the plan.
Is there any plan? Is there any plan in the works for there to be some sort of curriculum about at the middle school level? I I I see that as connected, like if we're talking about success at an elementary level, again, based on curriculum and implementing it. Is there a plan to replicate that success at the middle school level? And provide some sort of coherence for kids eight through eight?
So there
I see that as in service of plans, support plans in the future that are more focused on I guess like more nuanced, like more instructional nuances than like the big, like a big thing, like we don't have assessments yet that are across the schools. I'm glad we're doing that, but are we planning on? I'm sorry, my question's
All right, so it's by I think one of the shifts, as you know, from elementary to secondary is a departmentalization of content. So for middle school, if we're thinking about math, for example, they've gone through a process of thinking curriculum supports that both Boynton and Dewitt use with decimals. Last year's focus for the English departments and on the October PLC day was do we need as educators doing the curriculum? Are we doing the time together to discuss how our standards are vertically aligned and what resources we're using to meet students' needs? And that is where they spent time and then built out common assessments. For science, that's also an ongoing conversation. So what are we seeing from the test results? Where's where based on trends we see? This is one indicator of many of, you know, the state tests. What support do we need? What tools are out there that we want to try? And is it a curriculum that we need or time with the standards? At the specifically for science, I'll say the challenge has been among the science educators, wow, there isn't anything that we're seeing that hits the three components of the standards when we're looking at the engineering and the content and the science standards being like similar to the the reading rope we've looked at having three components. Is there something out there that exists that we feel at the time that we have with kids is going to nail all three of those? Or is that something we need to spend more time creating and developing? So that's where science is. So let's see, you talked about English, math, science. And then social studies at this moment in time is standards.
So this center isn't a plan for curriculum alignment, Kate?
There's a plan for vertical alignment as far as instruction, and I think that is an inspiring step. So what I mean by that is this year in our district plan, we have a rule of math strategist at the elementary level. So that's an overage for a teacher to be a teacher leader in math and work with technicals. They meet monthly to talk about tools or specifically around Ureca Math Square. And then throughout the year, we have five half-day releases planned. So all kindergarten teachers across our district will come together for a half-day, say in the morning. And then in the afternoon, all first grader teachers will come together. And it's by catchments of school feeder schools to Boynton and Dewitt. So for example, if my elementary school will be, the students will be going to Dewitt, those four schools are going to meet for professional development. The opportunity there is then we can meet the sixth grade math teachers. And again, that vertical alignment, how are we continuing? This is where Ureca Math Square, we saw. Those are some trends. And that's, that's exciting. And I think that's a really important next step for us.
I have just one more question. So then with the elementary plans, somewhere, I guess, like my, my understanding with intervention is that ideally the intervention is closely matched with the program. Right, like the like the, like in the federal government, like before, like their, their education briefs were like, don't make your own intervention materials, use what is provided. That was like a consistent theme in the recommendations. So I'm trying to understand, like, when I look at some of the plans, I see like we're going to be designing literacy intervention or we're going to be signing like math tasks and intervention? Am I reading that accurately? And so are teachers, well, I guess at the elementary level, are they being expected to create their own intervention materials in that in the ELA? Or are they saying that provided material state from M class that we use from Eureka
So definitely more of the latter of using resources that have been, that are existing either within the curriculum programs or are in supplements. Well, like M class is an assessment program that also includes instructional recommendations and many lessons of and it's very skill-based, right? Whereas magnetic reading, which in it, embedded supports and scaffolds for reteaching and pre-teaching lessons throughout the curriculum that teachers use both as intervention and support resource. And part of the work of the math strategist this year at the elementary level is really helping teachers learn where those supports live within Eureka Math, right? So they are, they're not like in a neat package, but there are many extensions and tools for reteaching. So how to use the embedded resources within Eureka Math to provide those interventions that are aligned to the curriculum, I would say.
And I would add, so M class this year for math and that being used to support interventions, it's, it's a pilot. So different grade levels are using it at different schools. And our teachers are being really gracious, I think, in the troubleshooting of that because it is first year of that tool for the company. And so there's things that need to be addressed and things that surface just as far as data syncing. So to give a concrete example, a student might do an assessment. And if they don't click done, that data doesn't feed in to the tool for the teacher. And that is something that a teacher can't override. And so we discovered, oh, some students clicked done and some students didn't. So why is our data set incomplete? And so now we're going to solve that problem. And I I mentioned that because the actual intervention that we're using M class is not aligned to any curriculum with intention, but get with multiple curriculums used throughout the country. That, okay, if you're using, based on this assessment, if you're using this curriculum, here are some recommendations to just echo what Lynn said.
I would love to zoom out a little bit. You said that the state is required that more of the data and focus is supposed to be on academics and also acknowledge, right? And so that student academic achievement is impacted by so many things that are not directly related to instruction and certainly from test scores. In last time, last year, the the set plans like varied quite significantly across the school based on how much was really focused on like, you know, tutoring and instruction and which ones were related to broader approaches to student well-being and engagement. So my question is kind of multi, one is I want to make sure that I understand if they're saying that the reporting requirements need to be kind of focused on, you know, academic outcomes versus like the inputs. Well, let me just ask that before I ask in the second part of my book. Like, are they saying like you, the the strategies that you're using, you have to show, have to be more direct and related to instruction or just the measures of those that you're reporting on, like what the outcomes are?
Both. All right, so and just to explain kind of how the feedback from the state comes to us, I guess, since Enfield is a CSI or comprehensive school improvement school. We are actually paired with a consultant from NICE that who gives direct feedback and provides approval to the plan, right? So whereas for the TSI schools or other four schools, those are locally developed and approved. Okay. And so the feedback came directly from our consultant at the state Enfield. And in the actually development of the plan, the state changed their template, where you have to separate out your strategies as instructional or non-instructional this year. And you're required to have at least two instructional strategies, non-instructional strategies are not required. And the requirement is that you have more instructional strategies than non-instructional strategies. So the state really have like parse that out, bring that focus.
Okay, thank you. So keeping in mind that the vast majority of, I think people are very interested in the set plans and like what the district is going to support these schools, recognizing that the vast majority of people have not looked at these plans and don't really know all of the things that we're talking about right now. Like what what did you, like, if you were talking about just like elementary, well, how do I even ask this? Are you being more consistent, I guess, across the elementary schools because of this new requirement? Has that kind of made you, you all think that the approach needs to be a little bit more similar or streamlined? And similarly with the middle schools and then my other pieces, like how, how are you, given that you fully know that all of these other pieces have such a big impact on that? How, how have you decided to build these plans? Like, what do you, what do you think are the most important quantitative data points around academics and then the ones that are more related more broadly to student well-being and engagement and getting them to school? In the first place, like, how did you balance this new
I So we had a real opportunity and gift in looking at student data, giving teacher input, hearing from caregivers, for example, from Enfield that you appreciated this, this and this. And the state's, I would say, simplification of the the template and the very direct feedback to really prioritize three to five components. And we're going to ask you to measure the instructional was somewhat liberating in being able to really target and have three priorities. And we had the benefit of the data from Enfield and the experience to say, all right, this is, you know, these these portions of the plan other schools want to use when we're just analyzing or betting on what did we do with the amount of money that the state gave us for this? And I think, I think that's that's really important to identify what went well for students and teachers and where they felt supported. And then replicate that. So I think these, the plans this year are more aligned and are reflect Enfield's plan last year. More of some of the key strategies on professional development. Simple around pacing, the use of assessments, whether it's M class or the state test.
That's great. That's great to hear that, you know, because there has been a year of testing those things and seeing really positive outcomes from Enfield. So to know that taking those lessons learned and being able to do what it is from across the district, that's great.
And I think that learning from schools even outside of the SCAP plan, but thinking about really intentional school-wide intervention cycles. So that's something that started in a couple of our elementary schools last year and they resulted in a lot of growth for students we saw, where it was the whole school was kind of like on an eight-week cycle where we were revisiting the data and changing up groups at the same time. And so this year, all eight of our elementary schools are doing that. And you see that reflected, I think, you guys plan. And that's a direct result of looking at a successful practice and one of our focus is in growing that.
So sorry to go back to the the second piece, but about thinking more of the whole student. Is there? I mean, it sounds like you're actually seeing it as more of an opportunity. So maybe it's not that we're having to do any trade-offs, but is there I guess, is there a string of line ideas for that too? And is there specific areas that we're emphasizing?
So I'll say last year, there was a school plan that was really focused on caregiver communication. So setting up a system for that, what's the newsletter going to look like? Who is it going to, you know, who's going to contribute to that newsletter? How is it going to be shared with the community? And that was in close partnership with parents and caregivers. So that system set up. So although that isn't on the, that's not on the plan anymore, because now there's a system. That's, and we can use that newsletter as an example for other schools and lure them around and create communications home. Because that was a connecting with caregivers was a big component of last year's plan. And also how are we engaging students? Because there was more a focus on absenteeism. And so setting up some of those systems. You don't need another year to continue it.
I, I'm so sorry. That just made me quiet. Do you, can you? I know that I know that the last time that we heard from, uh, Principal Wright, right? From Boynton, that it sounded like things that that kind of creative approach to homeroom felt like it was having a positive impact. Do you know offhand if they, I don't know, is there any like data that supported whether that students feel more engaged or come to school more often or maybe not in time, but just curious.
It's hard to it's hard to say isolate if that in and of itself was the factor, but that is, was a really innovative, thoughtful way for students to put in homework based on educators. They had a direct connection with. And was really positive and well received. So that's another great example of something to retain you.
Yeah, I would be very curious.
Okay, one question that I had. I was just thinking about test scores and performance, something that I think about a lot. And um, when, when a student is getting like a four on a math test, we think have a good sense that they probably have a good mastery of the standards because they're getting a four. And when they get a one or a two, I feel like there's just so many more questions that come up about like, why did they get a one or two? Do they really know the standards? Like, what factors actually went in? Was it about the test taking? Was it really hungry? Ten thousand things. So then I was looking at one of the plans for, um, I think it was in the uh, I think it was in the BGM plan. You guys were talking a little bit about phonics. Um, no, not phonics, I'm sorry, reading fluency. And and so like whenever we're looking at reading, there's a lot of ways to look at reading phonics is, you know, how you pronounce the words, fluency is how fast you read. Comprehension is how well you understand. All of those are aspects of reading. So I noticed that there was a lot of emphasis. Or at least a portion of that on fluency. Um, and then that just made me start to think about like all the reasons why somebody might have trouble with reading fluency. I think from just that they're not very good readers, or they have ADHD, or they have, you know, another fifty thousand other explanations. Um, so that's just my setup to my question, which is kind of like I I'm wondering about like a, like an individual student approach so that there's a certain number of students that aren't passing. And I'm just kind of wondering how or if, um, you know, as part of these plans or just as part of teachers looking at this. Like, how, you know, who's or how we're looking at each person that isn't passing and trying to sort of figure out what do they, what does each person need? Like this person, you know, I'm just, I know this is beyond the solstice, but this person needs to be on ADHD medication. You know, this person needs to wear noise-canceling headphones because they can't concentrate. This person needs help with like reading and phonics and things like that. And that's why they're fluent in these. So I'm just a little bit curious about if that plays a role or, you know.
Yeah, so it a- absolutely does. So one thing, uh, a requirement of the state is that there is a threshold between level two and three on the New York State test where we are required to individually review each student that scores at or below that in the context of other measures of achievement. So yes, we want the state test score, but then we look at M class, for example, or classroom assessments, or at the middle school grades from, from the courses of the subject areas. And uh, using that collection of data to say, what do we think contributed to to this child's score on this test and what supports do we have? What supports are in place for this child? And if there aren't, do we feel like we need it, right? So does does that performance on that test match the performance on other measures of achievement? If it doesn't, it's probably more likely a like, I don't know, it's a bad day or like the test format or whatever, but if it's consistent. Uh, making sure that they are either, if it's content in a content lab, uh, like at the middle school, we have different structures for support. Some are, um, more study skills at the labs where it's working on really about how do I organize my work for completion versus like, how do I do the math? So it's, if there is an individual process for each of those kids. Also, each of our schools have as part of their MTSS structures, the multi-tiered systems and support. We look both in PLC, so at the grade level, PLC level, reviewing data on a regular basis and and putting into place supports either for immediate uh, implementation, like these these kids didn't get this concept in math this week based on exit ticket data. So we're going to do another lesson for these children. Or kind of those eight-week cycles looking and saying, okay, we've done another progress monitoring and we have a bunch of kids that are still struggling with the valtines. Right? So we're going to put a group together for that. So, um, I guess there's the data conversations are happening on a cycle at different levels within each school. And it is individualized and also group, you know what I mean? We also look at cross-level. The fluency goal was, uh, for example, seeing that we had really good accuracy on the M class in the three levels, four and five. So kids were reading accurately, but not fluently. And when you have more than thirty percent of students that are struggling with a skill, that's not about intervention. That's about what are we doing in the, in the classroom to to help support all kids, right? It's not very efficient to say we're going to make an individualized plan when it's something that many people are needing support with.
I have a, I have a follow-up question to that. Being your ADHD, my meds have worn off, so I forgive me if I trail, I should have written this down. So okay, thank you. Now, now it's back. So thinking about kind of to Adam's point, but also I think about anecdotally what I see from helping my own children in their work, supporting them. And how vastly different every teacher is, and especially at the middle school level. Just every teacher does the standards-based grading differently, has different ways about doing things. And so just, I think, uh, you know, helping students and then thinking, there, there's no system that is the same throughout each classroom. And I understand the need for autonomy for teachers, but as we're talking about curriculum and and supporting students. Is there any, and I always think about what we can do as a board. What can we do to make this better? What policies can we look into? And so when I see, when I see the difficulties in trying to understand how I can help support the students in my home. I see that lack of synergy and connection between even the teachers within one school. And so is that, I mean, is that something that falls under anything the ICSD can do as a district? Is that something we can do as a board to 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 implement policies where that standards-based grading has some sort of crossover between classrooms? To make it easier for students to understand expectations and and caregivers to support their students with those expectations to work towards twos, threes, and eventually fours.
So if I'm hearing your question.
I know, it might not make sense. It makes sense here.
Is basically can we improve support for students through, well, well, I'm just going to try to answer it. Professional development and time for teachers to collaborate could support more common experience for the student and I think hearing from you know, you sharing that experience and having different students uh, in your, in your own home. Um, as they go throughout the day is a, that's a data point. And so policy from where I see the conversations that happen in PLCs and the professional development that we offer and that feedback loop can help support the situation immediately rather than keeping it the same and trying to craft a policy that's going to make it better. Like I, I think asking, for example, the secondary level, there are department leaders who are teacher leaders and asking them, hey, you know, we'd like to open up some time for communication between your departments on standards-based grading. And how it's playing out in your course. Because if you, as you know, and and at the middle school, there are team times, so you can request to with a team. And actually, some teams communicate out to families as a team to grow that consistency for the student from teacher to teacher. So I think we, I think your question highlights something we can do better at. And I don't know if policy is the way forward as much as just immediate conversation about it.
And I think one strategy that you'll see in the district plan that is, that is kind of focused on on what you're talking about is the uh, implementation of data strategies at the grade level. So the implemented data strategy, just one per building at elementary that is really helping to to facilitate those, those problem-solving process and data cycles at the elementary school. At the middle schools, we had one person that was the R T I coordinator. We have as a result of these plans, um, shifted that. So now there is data strategies for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade at both Boynton and to with. And those teacher leaders are facilitating some of those team conversations. So once per week, facilitating a team conversation that is looking directly at a shared dataset. So for example, looking at the percentage of students getting a one, two, three, or four on a grade across a what, a grade level, so that we can look at how does that differ across classrooms? How does that differ across different groups of students? And why might that be happening, right? Um, so supporting more intentional, I guess, use of that time around shared datasets and protocols is one way to elevate those conversations and talk them up. And if making practice more transparent and shared amongst a team, that we know what's happening in each other's room. Um, like another example of something that might happen with that data strategy, then a team finds doing being like a sliced protocol where everybody brings their homework that they get for the last, for the last three days. And we look at that across our subjects and classes and say like, what is the student experience and how does it differ? What, where do we go from there? We're seeing towards that.
So I want, I think what I was trying to say, you know, you overcomplicated it is these experiences for me highlight needed structures. And so an example of the data strategists and and focusing and prioritizing that structure is pretty important.
Well, thanks. If we might want to bring this, uh, this item to a close for now, because I'll make sure we get to our, our next item. And before we get to the next item, we're going to backtrack to a couple of items that we passed over. Let's go back to item and thank you both very much. I'm, I'm the only reason why I wasn't formally thanking you says you're not done yet and we have one more. So thanks for that. So going back to, uh, item four point one, we just have to approve our minutes from the May twenty seven, twenty twenty five work session and you and I will go. So, uh, are you okay with those? I'm also okay with those. So that's good. Um, the next item is item four point one, we have to elect a chairperson for this year for our uh, for our committee and, uh, I'll open the floor up to see if there are any people that are interested in that for this year.
I'm interested for what. So I'm, I'm interested. I love this stuff. I love curriculum and instruction. It's like my, my job and my career. And I think like Erin, what you honestly, what you said a bit of those sort of resonates a lot in terms of policy. I think like, you know, the board's role of governance, I think a lot of them come up with policy, the not and to get in the way of any of the initiatives that are happening in this sort of strategy, these right PLCs and et cetera. I do think that there's ways that we can support and hopefully accelerate the work being done around teaching and learning through board policies. And I don't know, I miss like facilitating meetings, elevating voices, like my job once upon a time. So I'm humbly interested in it.
I'll also throw my hat in the ring, not it's a hard job. And as a new board member, I must say, sometimes it helps to wait, watch for a year before you join in. So I'll just throw my hat out there as well.
And I have enjoyed being the chair for the last two years. I'm okay, uh, you know, passing it on to somebody else for for this year. I plan to be a very active uh, member of the committee regardless of whether I run the meetings or not. Uh, and it might be nice to just be able to kind of participate and not necessarily facilitate. Um, but happy to help out whoever, uh, whoever is the next chair. And I'll, I'll definitely be, uh, be active behind the scenes in the meetings as well. So I'm okay not, not doing it. So, so let's open it up for, um, I guess for nominations.
I think we both self-nominated. I think it's just a matter of voting.
All right, well, Jacob went first. So, uh, so I'll say, um, we can take a vote all in favor of having, uh, Jacob chair. And we'll pass two more.
All right, I guess it is time for us to go into the overview of assessment data. You have a presentation. We are excited to watch and the, should we ask questions as we go or should we want us to go?
As you please. Ask questions as we go.
Well, then you should start occasionally to.
Well, the slide is coming up. I do just want to share with folks that may be watching. I don't know if anybody watched. If you are interested in seeing the plans themselves, they are all posted on the district website under the About Us tab, Accountability. And, um, so you can find the school plans and the district plan there.
But it sounds like the, like phones are not adjustable, so maybe what does need to be done for it?
So today we brought just a few data points. This is, uh, you know, we can, we could look at lots and lots of different data. So today we're just focusing on the three through eight New York State exams. Those were taken last spring. And, um, as you can see up here is a line chart showing trends for the last twelve years for all three subjects. English Language Arts or ELA, Math and Science. The yellow line is ELA. The darker purple line is Science and the, the red line is our Math there. So, um, you can go to the next slide. Oh, I have it. I'm sorry. So you can see from all this, one, one, you know, celebrating that in all three subjects, we had an increase, some more than others over last year, so year-over-year increase. Um, and we are also at or above where we were at with the exception of Science, I'll say, but for ELA or Math pre-COVID, right? So that is also something we are happy about. I don't know how to make it go forward. Oh, there we are.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have this data available by school?
Um, yes, yeah, and schools have that data.
How do we find it?
Um, you do not have that data. I'd say schools have that, but that is something but to provide to all of you. You guys have your presentation. Yes. So ELA or English Language Arts, um, we have put a lot of focus in over the last few years and we are really excited to celebrate that we we saw significant increases last year for the first time in many years, right? An eight percent point increase overall in grades three through eight. In, as I said, five out of our eight elementary schools, we saw double-digit increases, right? So over a twenty percent increase in one of our elementary schools. And that's really incredible, right? And I think, you know, you can't And I think, no, you can't contribute it to one cause or the other, but thinking about that we are in. Year four of our implementation or of our universal implementation of the foundational skills program at grades K two for E L A. We adopted our three through five comprehension curriculum last year universally and the use of M class. And more intentional intervention, right, so like all of those I think are contributing factors that we saw.
That's, that's amazing.
And when I shared this with teachers at summer, at our M T S S summit, like teachers like, really, like this is the result of lots of hard work. On the part of educators and students, right, and their families, so I'm really happy about that and it's one year, right? But like, we are excited about the trend, also that those increases, although. The amount varied at cross subgroups, it was universal across also all groups of students, right, so that, that is really great. And that we saw the most gains in grades three and four is also exciting, just thinking about how can the impacts of multiple years of implementation. Yeah, it did this time, yes, and for math, we saw a smaller increase, but it increased nonetheless. And again, in, in several of our elementary schools, a more significant increase. And then looking at grades three and eight, right, grade eight math, math proficiency is something. Where we, we've had our lowest proficiency rates for many years and so seeing bigger increases there is, is also exciting. But this is also, when you think about the implementation or we see in the plans and the district work. Bringing more focus to math through our professional development efforts this year, this is in response to the data, right? So how do we keep the foot on the gas literacy while also, also increasing our focus on math with more intentionality?
I mean, that's particularly notable with grade eight, because that's a lot of the. Deeper work that we've been hearing about at least, and then curriculum or K five, so that's like, worry there. Seeing that continue or that could be some math strategist.
Yeah, or, yeah, so definitely more PD, yeah.
I would say too, last year. Prior to the math strategist that we started this year, there was the math network. So it was someone from each school going to monthly meetings to, you know, talk about. Professional development needs. Research, teaching strategies and resources and sharing it out and the mass strategist role just grows that. So I also think the work that Kat Nickle did in collaboration with educators last year. Around pacing guides and getting, getting through Eureka math square content. That's an example of, you know, adopting a curriculum but enhancing the supports around it to implement it, take, takes time.
And I'm gonna put you on the spot, do you know offhand how many more. Specifically, students of color. Were taking algebra in eighth grade?
I do not have that number offhand, but that's something looking.
Do you know even if we've seen like a, a similar kind of increase to some extent given the goals of.
And, it's okay, I don't wanna misspeak and I, I can reshare, we did a presentation in frequent company last year where we looked at that and I would say. We're not where we want to be in terms of participation, right? Where I would say the representation of students in algebra at eighth grade does not reflect the population of the school as a whole, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Speaking of Algebra One, at the middle school level, this next table. So if we went back to the first charts, looking at math, students that are not included in, in the, in that percentage. Of proficiency on math are students in seventh and eighth grade that take math regions in lieu of math exam, so these are kids that. Accelerate into algebra and then you accelerate into geometry even, even in grade seven and eight. So you can see from here that. As we continue to. Increase participation in Algebra One at the middle school level. Performance continues to be very strong on the region's exam, so you're passing. Gets you assessment credit at the high school level, we ninety nine percent pass rate last year. And then over fifty percent of kids component at very high levels on that region, so thinking that at eighty five plus.
How, how normal is that in New York State or abnormal?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers offhand, but let me, let's get that from you, yes, but I like to think that exceptions.
And what, and you, I know you're about to go into Difol.
And plus, yeah, yeah.
What's called, but now, but I am curious, like, you, you shared celebrations from that in the LA and it sounds like there are certainly much to celebrate. Do you also have anything on your mind in terms of like, what this means in terms of next steps? Either based on highlighting the successes or addressing areas where you feel like we need to change course?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I think the, the, one thing that's meant to mention several times is that math strategist and those not release days. For professional development for elementary teachers, that is in direct response to, I think. That we're not seeing the accelerated growth that we are seeing at, at E L A. And so we want to provide more support to teachers and implementing the math program at high levels. So that is one strategy. Also, another piece not mentioned in, in the plan is that we are going to be implementing. Partnering with a company to provide tutoring to students and really focus on math in our five identified schools. Because attention we have and that really, I think was elevated last year as we. Got better and more focused on providing intervention for reading is that. There's not enough time, right, often kids, kids are struggling in multiple areas, we have to make decisions about. We have a half an hour to provide intervention, right? How do we do both? And so we are looking towards tutoring that can happen. For school, after school, at the middle school, thinking about during study hall, like ways to provide more targeted support, especially in math. Since we have less support in that area, we have reading teachers in all of our buildings, we do not have math support teachers in any of our buildings. Right, so that is. Yeah.
So by reading teaching, you mean by reading, like special master?
Certified teacher, yes, certified reading teachers, we have in all elementary and middle schools. That can provide additional support, yeah.
Can you say a little more about the, about the company and what the tutoring looks like and how that works?
Sure, sure, so the company's name is LaTara and they do, although they provide tutoring in both E L A and. Not this kind of their area of specialty. And it is, it's virtual tutoring, but it's done by humans, there's no A I involved in, in it, so. LaTara is the one that who hires the tutors and trains them, they use a curriculum that is aligned or. Built off of a program called illustrative math, which is aligned with Eureka math approach, that's one of the reasons we, we ended up with this company. Is looking at their tutoring curriculum was most closely aligned to Eureka math squared. And decimals at the secondary level compared to other companies we looked at, looking for that cohesiveness. And what it will look like is. Students will be, will meet, so research around the impact of tutoring is, is really looking for ninety minutes a week. For, for impact, and so either three times for thirty minutes or twice for forty five minutes. And our target is to have that in place for twenty five students in each of our identified buildings. We are in that process right now of, of looking and it's like a complex process of like. Looking at the data around who can benefit from additional support in math, but also then thinking about accessibility, so transportation, right? So that's, that's something we look at, especially at the elementary level, and we look at how we can leverage like. At B J M, kids that are at Southside or G F or in academic press are, are, we can support those kids more easily. Cause we can walk them to where they are versus somebody that has to get on a bus and go home, right? So it's, I would say a pilot year, right, this is the first time we're doing this and we'll be looking for impact on. You can share more, that's a good one, yeah.
So, so these students would be sitting at a computer.
Yes, and it's that the instructor will always have their camera on. We are going to have a teacher leader who is a tutoring coordinator in each building to kind of manage the, that's a. Point one six seven stipends on campus, so to kind of manage the scheduling, LaTara allows us to basically. Sit alongside and watch in on any sessions or principal or that tutoring coordinator can jump on to see. We get reports at the end of each session, both around achievement in terms of like meeting the targets of the lesson that was taught. As well as engagement, so with the students, you know, so we get that data and so that tutoring coordinator will be sharing that back with teachers. To kind of close that feedback and make sure that kids are making progress.
So just, I mean, I'm very excited about that idea, so I'm happy to hear about it, I, I just had a couple of quickly just paying for it. Through the grants that were given for the improvement.
Yes, we're still using, yeah, the school improvement grant money to pay for it.
And then just one question about like teachers, current employee, employed teachers, was that something like, did they have an option to do tutoring? Or was that something you guys discussed with the teachers?
So there's actually a posting that closes tomorrow for math tutors, we have received zero applicants. I mean, and that, it's not, that's not like, it's just like, when we thought about how to provide this capacity, people are busy, right? And so I'm looking for a, a, a vendor to provide the service for us. And, and LaTara is willing to partner with us that if we have, if, if we did have teachers that had a fight to that, they were going to tutor. Through the LaTara platform, I mean, be paid by us at their turn hour, maybe for that, yes.
What is the cost of the partnership?
I would have to, you have the plan, I said around. Yeah, I can provide like a per student cost and a total, a total cost, yes, it's like around twelve hundred per student. Total for the year. And like thirty weeks for night, yeah, yeah.
Would we be able to get like the, like, say that?
And it's all like, again, all paid through, through the existing, same grants.
With those grants that require to spend a certain like percent on, like is it wide open about how it's spent or it's a?
Wide open is, it's not wide open, no. No, I mean, it has to be directly, directly tied to our plan, so we have to show that direct online that between we're spending this. And how is that connected to the key strategies in our plan?
I, I also wanna add one, one thing that we heard from caregivers because, and parents, because part of this process is. Asking the groups that are targeted by the state, what do you need? And after school support competes with athletics. And so having something that's flexible that can be done. Now is the traditional after school hours when we have late buses and having more flexibility. Was the feedback that we received, I think it's important to note that.
Are, are like hotspots offered for families who have, like if they don't have internet access and things like that, like how do we? Work through those equity issues?
I, I think we can absolutely, I mean, we have, we provided those before and we can, I think that's another thing that was very attractive about LaTara is that they. Are willing to work with us for top kids tutored from home, they don't have to be in school, so like if we know a child's. Has to go on the bus home, but we can get agreement with the family that we, we are confident we can, we can get the child on a computer, we can. Buy whatever that support needed in terms of like equipment, a child can receive tutoring from home rather than not stay at school. So we have maximum flexibility in like the structures we can use to make that happen with this partner. Whereas some other partners were like, no, they have to be in school, slip that in or whatever.
And we do have community partnerships to provide. Wifi, that's something that hotspots that COVID highlighted is a need that we've been able to continue.
I'm just, no, 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 I'm sure, I'm not the same, I, I'm very like. Agreed completely, very exciting to have like tutoring opportunities, I, I have so many questions swirling around access. And I mean, even thinking about putting a kid in front of a computer, especially when they don't have an adult standing right next to them for forty five minutes expecting them to do. I could imagine Ben standing up and walking away, but you know, so there's questions about that and just so like kind of the social emotional support. But also, I mean, so many access questions, so I think it would be really. Interesting to hear, you know, how many of the first, like if you identify the first group, like how many of them even accepted the offer? Given all of the conflicting challenges or just like their trust in the system and, and everything else. And then kind of pretty regularly, it seems we're actually able to kind of, especially on the younger level. About whether they're able to follow through and access it and have them got bumped off of the internet a hundred times or couldn't make it to school. When they, you know, just, all the things, it just seems like, I assume that the company also talks about some of those barriers and how to overcome them, but it sounds like. If it works, it's great.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're looking at tutoring in terms of like eight week cycles and some kids might participate in all three of those eight week cycles. That are throughout the year or for the cycle, so perhaps like check, I would say early January would be a really good time to invite some of the folks that are hoping to leave this in our buildings. And share their experiences.
What I've done in the interest of time is I've added some next steps for us to like reflect information, like more about tutoring, so you can then talk more about the internet.
Shall we move ahead? And it does seem to be both up here, Jacob, so that. Yes, for folks that aren't familiar with this, M class is the platform through which the assessment dibbles eight is administered. Here in, in Ithaca City School District, and these are looking at composite scores, so this is a. Composite of lots of different. Skills that are best by different tasks, we talked about this a little bit last year and you can see, this is looking district wide, so this is K five. With a few sixth graders, because we used it, we were experimenting with it at sixth grade last year, that we. Saw great growth, right, district, right, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we decreased the percentage of students that were at the well below performance level. By eleven percentage points, right, and we increased the at or above by fourteen percent. That's really awesome, I would say what we are looking for, right, and I think it's a sign of a healthy system of curriculum and support. Is that that well below or below is around twenty percent, so that's like our goal, right?
Twenty percent in red and yellow?
Yes, yes, that would be where I would like, getting below that is, is really, really challenging, right? And that would, that would be a healthy system, right?
Looks like it's forty to fifty percent?
That's thirty, thirty six there right now at the bottom, but the end of year was twenty three below and thirteen percent. Yeah, and I will say, like at fifth grade, we were under that twenty percent at the end of the year, so we, we, we're, we're making good progress. Yeah, so this is district data, the next slides are provided to us by Amplify, which is the company that has M class. And is comparing us, giving us comparisons to a national data set, that's one, I think, really nice benefit of, of Amplify and its reach. So this is looking at sample size of around seven hundred thousand students nationally for grades K through three. The green line represents Ithaca in this case, and the blue line is that national user set, this is based on last year's data. We're looking at the percentage of students that were at or above at the beginning, middle and end of the year, so it's a three data points. You'll see that for grades K through two, Ithaca was significantly below the national sample at the beginning of the year. In terms of that, and we, like second grade, we are meeting, right, the national sample by the end of the year. So that is again evidence of effective instruction and intervention for kids and closing that gap. Um, and closing that gap. And by third grade, we are above the sample, the national sample, um, across the board. The next, yeah.
I'm just curious, like, so when I look at, like, the, especially, I guess, first grade at the beginning of the year. Um, I guess like, are there theories around why that was the case? Like why the first graders were starting off? See, now they're lower than the average.
I mean, I think this is, you know, this is year one, so, um, just looking at that, we, we've looked more at like of our, the sub skills. We're looking a lot at like cognitive awareness versus, uh, uh, you know, accurate decoding and thinking about. Uh, our curriculum, our foundational skills program, and is it providing enough practice in certain areas? So we are digging into that data more deeply now.
And similarly for a distinct test question, are we going to be able to see this data disaggregated by school? I vote, like, subgroup of students.
So, so we, we have that data and buildings have that. So again, let me work with Mary and Dr. Brad to see how. We want to provide that to you, but, um, I was like, that is not like. Principals, data strategists have this broken down by lots of different ways that they're using, um, so.
I'm asking more, I guess.
Sorry, you, you as the board, yeah.
I guess both, both from the board, but also I think like from the community perspective of like, you know, like we have a really cool tool. Like we have the equity report card, seeing this within the equity report card. It's something I would love to be able to direct community members to, or like I'm the, you know, parent of the kid in South Hill. Um, I'd love to be able to see how we're doing at South Hill and I imagine that like folks with shit go to other schools would feel the same way. Um, so is that a standard practice though to?
I was gonna say, we have very intentionally, uh, in the equity report card, not disaggregated across schools, um, in, in that tool. And we can, that's probably a great conversation to have at another time about the reasoning behind that and consider that how do we learn from data and not. Judge from it, knowing that there's lots of places where you can find that comparative data, but, uh, let's put that on a, for us to talk more about.
Will do.
Uh, and then the final slide is, is looking at kind of the inverse. So percentage of students that are well below. So these are students that are significantly below grade level, uh, the red line being Ithaca, blue line being the same nationals that we just looked at. Again, seeing how we started the year, um, in grades K through two above, some places significantly above. With many more of our percentage of their students at that well below and how we made considerable progress and closing that gap throughout the year. So right now the work, we just finished benchmarks for this year. So we have a new collection of data for students. We're doing some analysis on looking at, uh, some regression over the summer and thinking about that and how kids that were getting supports last year. Probably need continued support to kind of like firm up those newer skills, right? So giving that influence really could for kids. Uh, but we're excited about this, right? We're excited about the data and, um, the work that we're interested in.
Well, as a, as a follow up to that, I am also very excited about so much of the data that you shared today. And I'm curious. How, how is this celebrated like with teachers and school leaders? And what does the district do to be able to really kind of celebrate and recognize all the folks that are? I mean, students for sure are doing the, the brunt of the work, but with everyone, like how, how, how is the district doing that instead? Are there ways that we as a board can help kind of elevate that information and also? Um, yeah, just curious how, how we already are recognizing educators and communities.
So I would say that, um. Building leaders in collaboration with teacher leaders in their building, you know, by building. Looking at the data as Lynn mentioned, the retreat that happened and looking at the systems. But also starting the year talking about it. Here's one data set as, as a way of having a shared vision for where we're going to go next. Um, was really important. So definitely was a discussion at the beginning of the year when staff would gather for openings and, and. Building leaders are leaving. Um, alongside with their data strategists, yeah, the conversation of, okay, let's look at where we're starting the year. And the work that we did last year.
This could be a great opportunity to partner with PTA council as well to make sure. You know, PTAs have an opportunity to be able to share this with. Kind of their communities as well.
Thank you so much for sharing. Yes, lots of exciting news, lots, lots of fun work to do. Are there additional questions from any of our board members of this presentation? Okay, well, in that case, um, we now move into other discussion items. From the items, I do not believe that we have any, but I wanted to see there anything that. Folks would like to raise in this last.
Uh, two things. One, um, I think the four thirty start time is really, uh, when you talk about equity. It is just not conducive to most people's lives and work schedules and exploring it, at least making it four forty-five, potentially five. And keeping tight meetings would be important. You know, just throw that out there and then, uh, two. In the interest of discussing meeting structures, um, last year we had some really great sessions. Going to PLC meetings and I wonder if curriculum would serve, uh, and, and learn more as a committee. If we took it on the road to some of those. And so instead of having this formal meeting of presentation of slides. Really just, you know, go and engage and have discussion items in those environments like we did last year. But, but potentially have those take the place of this meeting, just in the interest of, you know. Feet on the ground, getting that feedback from teachers doing the work and building leaders. It was so valuable. So I'm just throwing those two things out there.
That captured the note around like the meeting time and I know that that's something like we. Just can you give, for the sake of myself and anyone else who's not aware, can you just talk a little bit more about the PLC starting?
So, I mean, maybe Mary can explain what PLCs are. It's the history of them and I can happily share my perspective as a board member. But I don't want to get into the technical aspects of what those are.
Well, they were initiated, um, last year, we had certain topics, um, listening circles. That were optional for educators to come to during their PLC time on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. To discuss topics such as standard space grading, um, and inclusion were the two topics. Um, and next years we've also done instructional rounds, um, at buildings where. We toured the buildings with an intended purpose and a milk catcher around. Whether it's math instruction, really great meeting instructions and a bunch of that, you know, there were different topics that we used. That's another format appearing directly in the building here and directly from educators and leaders.
And I found it to be a really great way where it could be a targeted focus, like the standard space grading conversation we learned. Or I, I mean, I don't mean to speak for everyone else. I learned so much more in that session than I have learned in. Half a dozen of these meetings. Um, and, and, you know, and it's a way to collaborate and ask, you know, educators. What they want to talk about in a format that is just a little less formal, that really lends to. Just sort of more of a candor and a give and take than this in the room presentation model.
I, I would just say I like that idea. No objection. I want to do what you're saying. I don't know that I would want to eliminate the, the meeting. When we all get together because I think it's nice to go out and field and then I think it's nice to kind of pull together. You know, obviously it's just my opinion, we could do whatever.
I don't mean eliminating every meeting.
Sure.
But, you know, some months it can be very hard to do more than one thing. And so I'm just pointing that out.
And what you're reminding me of just like, having, you know, making sure that the format matches the intention, right? Like we really want to get sense of like what, say it's teaching perspective on X issue, then what you're describing makes a ton of sense. Like I know for me also with, one of the weirdest things of being a board member is not actually being like. Not visiting schools in any capacity. I think like being able to do that from the perspective of like to see what it's like. What teaching and learning is like, especially connected to the issues makes all that sense. And there are like times, I think like tonight, honestly, like with the data presentation where this sort of format makes a lot of sense. So I hear it and I'm creating, I'm talking more about.
Well, I just think that's the thing. I couldn't agree with Erin more. I think that they are so, so, so valuable. It changed my perspective dramatically on issues. And I think that it's really hard for us as board members who are not in the classroom. A lot of these decisions without being able to have, even, even decisions to continue talking about something without. I'm unable to hear from educators. So also thank you, Mary, for organizing them and, and allowing a space where frankly, I mean. Educators speak very candidly and not always, you know, in support of what's going on or with ideas about ways they would want to do things better. So I think the insights are way more, you know, coupling that with like looking at the data to be able to know what areas we want to focus on then.
Yes, and also thank you to Catherine Sernera and David Isley who helped organize those and all. And, and I think one other thing to point out, it's, it's meeting teachers where they are during their time. It's not asking them to take more time out of their days. It's, it's like. Being in their environment and really soaking in it.
Probably best. So I capture, I, I know like we all capture respective items, but like what to, what for next time, um, we'll. Um, do again the setting for next meeting and make sure that it's published with advance notice for the public. And with that, because we have four minutes, perhaps we should stand for a few minutes before the rest of our evening, we will close the public meeting.